Amen, you may take your seats. We saw Gara Fasi. Greetings once again in the precious name of the Lord Jesus Christ. I want us to give the Lord the hand of praise. I want someone to shout "Thank you, Lord!" Thank you, Jesus! Can I hear that with the mic? Are you there? Thank you, Lord! Thank you, Jesus! Amen, we want to thank the pastor. Thank you so much Pastor Manu. Very precise. Even if we can dismiss and go home. For today. Our men can agree with me. In Jongshai, don't try with us a mind welcome to our life. As long as we are alive, it's like a dream. But, well, we really appreciate the Lord. That was good. Want to appreciate what the ministers have done here so far. We recognize everyone when the rest come. I expect quite a number in the afternoon so that I don't keep on repeating the same thing all the time. Amen. So, let's just go straight to the reading of the word. I will ask the interpreter to read for me from Exodus. I want you to read for me chapter 3 of Exodus from verse 7.
Zino Mari akati ziro kwajo ndakaona kune zikwa kwa vana wangu, varimui jipita ndikan zwa kudani zira, kwa vono kuda kuguta, noku da kueva tariri vavu, vamabasa, noku da, ah, noku ti dino ziva kuchema kwavo, ndakuru ka kuti diva zika, diva rubire, nama woko ava jipita, ah, noku budisa muika iyo yo, dino va Isa kunika yakanaka huru kunika ino yere ra mukaka, noku chi uko kuno gara va kenani, va Hiti, va Amori, va Perezzi, va Hivi, va Jepusii, zino tarira, ah, kuchema kwa vana wa Israeli, kwa shika kwa ndiri, ndaona kutambuzwa, kwa vana utambuzwa, na kona jipita, na yezo zino uyandi kutume kuna faro, kuti uno budisa vana wangu kuva, ah, ah, uno budisa vana wangu vana wa jip, wa Israeli mu jipita. Jirumozisi akati kuna Mari, inindi aniko kuti ndiende kuna faro, ni budise vana wa Israeli mu jipita. Akati ziro kwajo ndichawa newe eh eh chichi ratizo, chokuti ndi, ah, ndakutuma, kana omawa budisa vana mu jipita, mchana mata Mari pa gomorino. Ipapu mozisi, ah, ipapu mozisi kuna Mari, ah, ipapu mozisi kuna Mari, tarira i kana ndashika kuva vana Israeli, ndichati kwa vadi, Mari wama zibava enyu, akakutuma, ah, kwa uri iwo va katikwa ndiri, kozitaraki, diani, ndichati chi. Ndichawa ie wandichawa. Akati unoti kuva vana Israeli, ndichawa ndie anituma kwa muri.
Amen. Yes, I want you to go to Luke chapter 4, verse 9 and 10. Ah, ruka chapter 4? Verse 9 and 10, verse 9.
Puta ie wo ma nakomanawa Abraham, ma nakomanawa muno akawu ya kuzotshaka, ni kupone sa wa kara shika.
You may take your seats. I want to talk on the reason of his coming. Amen, the reason of his coming. We saw here in Luke, ah, chapter 4 where he says, "For the son of man is coming." To seek and save. That's right, that which is lost. That's the reason of his coming. And you are the reason of his coming. I am the reason of his coming. We are the reason of his coming. There is something that attracts God. What is it if his children get in danger? That's an attraction to the Almighty God. When Daniel was in the den of lions. It attracted God to come down. When Shaddam Michalabet Nigo went into the fiery furnace. That was an attraction to the foreman to appear. In your condition today. Is the reason of his coming. What you're going through today. Will cause God to come down. If you're sick and suffering today. If you want God to appear. Let his children. Be in danger. Immediately. You'll see the presence of God. Because God wants to bring his children out. Like what Exodus says. Like what Moses says. Like what God says to Moses. Or what he said. The God of Abraham. The God of Isaac. What is he saying here? I'll do to you. What I did to Abraham. I'll do to you. What I did to Isaac. I'll do to you. What I did to Jacob. What did he do to Abraham? He created a hell. Right on top of Moriah. What did he do to Abraham? He gave him a son. In a condition of paradise. The God of Abraham. The God that opens the paradise. If you're barren today. He's the God of Abraham. He's the God of Sarah. He's the God of Isaac. If you're looking for any Rebecca. He's the God of Isaac. If you are looking for something. If you want the grace. He's the God of Jacob. What did he do to Jacob? He gave him the better life. If you're looking for the Holy Ghost. He can baptize you. He's the Holy Ghost. And he send you to Laban. Where he can bless you. Oh, hallelujah! By a paradoxes. The God of Jacob. Let Jacob. To Laban. Laban working seven years. Jacob working for seven years. And he was tricked. Laban was not aware. It was glad. Was this Jacob? Laban was not aware. It was glad. Who had inspired. The mother of Jacob. To go to where he was. Because Rebecca. Was told. You have two nations. They will obey. They are two nations. They have two blessings. But you're getting there. The young are. Will be saved. The God of Jacob. He's sending him to Laban. That this man. That is mistreating. He's annoying. That this man. God is watching over him. They may not be aware. But God's eyes. Upon you. God's eyes. We're watching Jacob. Whatever Jacob went through. God was very much aware. And he saw. That he was tricked and married. I don't know who took away. The man who was supposed to marry you. But let me tell you something. I don't know. Who took away? The wife you're supposed to marry. What is the God of Jacob? You're going to get better than that. You're going to get better. Than what you have today. You're going to have a double portion. Of the blessings of God. When he went to Laban. He went with a better life. And that better life. Was always there. To make a way. Red light was taken. And that better life. That you possess. Will make a way for you. The baptism of the Holy Ghost. That you possess. Will make a way for your husband. That better life. Of the baptism of the Holy Ghost. Will make a way for the good wife. That better life. Of the baptism of the Holy Ghost. Will make a way. For you for the good child. That better life. Of the baptism of the Holy Ghost. He will mount black. Your stopper stances. He will mount black. Your stopper stances. I don't care. I will lead you to Salali Ayen. But the God of Jacob. He will mount black. By a paradox. By a miracle. Oye! Dear him, the God of Abraham. Amen, the name of the Lord be blessed. You know what it is? We are going to receive. The portion of Abraham's blessings. The portion of Isaac's blessings. And the portion of Jacob's blessings. Abraham, he created. Laban then made a trick. He said, "This young man." He would take away my two daughters. And my sheep and my camels and my everything. Let me make life so hard for him. It was a rare thing. For the animal. To give birth. To a little one with some spots. So he said, "Jacob." Whatever little sheep that comes. With one color. That's mine. We go to the crow of the cattle there. Whatever the little one comes. If it's red hayfar. It's mine. If it's black. It's mine. If it's pale. It's mine. But anything. With some little dots. No matter where the dot goes. Even on the eyes. You take it. And that's a rare thing. They said, "Do we agree?" Jacob noticed it was so hard. And he was not going to get anything. The Lord whispered to him. He said, "Accept it anyhow." Ta'aku shika pangua ku di supervisor. Ano buruka mu kombe tay boya chi drive. Zainda zognorara Mari ndoku uyajkanzi mangwa nakseni. Ja'uno ita iwa kana waainda kuno difutu. Andi kuropa fatzire kure. Di no kuropa fatza. Pa ne shaka ku kombe reta ijo jo. Kunya ku shisi ri shako. Shicha va shako. That is, kunya ku shisi ri shako. Shicha va shako. So he accepted it. He went. He said, "Gwandera to take off the back of this little tree." He goes, "Lord, what is it, you just follow instructions." Take off the box. In a way called Harris. That's the way we worship our Lord. Muma hallelujah! Mukuparizwa kwa shoka imama muneshinabuda. Muma amen imama muneshinabuda. Mukutenda imama muneshinabuda. Muklari imama muneshinabuda. Musacrifice ye yamuneshinabuda. Mukuyayitoka muneshinabuda. Mukuflyaka ku faku ingirani muneshinabuda. Mukupuruka ku faku tupai muneshinabuda. Mukupacha wali spek muneshinabuda. Awusiwa wa kafa tupai. DJ Wafa. Awusiwa wa kafa ingirani DJ Wafa. Awusiwa wa fapa mata kapo DJ Wafa. Awusiwa wa fapa trile shapo DJ Wafa. Awusiwa wa harare DJ Wafa. Andi siri ndi nda fapo DJ Wafa. Pa ne wa nati ndiri ba duze ndonza ndiri mumba. Jaga dosiana. Ne pa ne a famba kutoya klo pida. Mukati me tende racho. Jaga siana ne a sarari kumba. Pa ne chikona chata wana pasama da. Pa ne furana. Nofana kuno miha ipap. Wa ujvoti ndichapura ne pocha ona umsana. Jikanzi Jacob ufa tora ili tumi tiachu tora ngawanda. Uno ira zike mufura. Va atwa raskanze ndauno ra zike. Chi enda uno zitin? Uzuunze pa na. Enda uno zitin etina wana waka uepa. Tina muria kwa uepa no tina wase wa uepa no. Chi enda uno zitin etu ueja tui ueja pa. Aywa tina 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 shu ya tina. Koka la ueya koka la ueya da na wu ya. Jikanzi DJ Wafa. Dina mashandira ndina hita. I have my own way of doing things. Maybe you can open there also for the, for the air to come in. It's now venom here. So he took the ship. To the waters. Pa zai maso. Zikatza mfuera. Zai juona. Wa ideazi. Ichi wana ime wa iu. Yoma. Zitanga ku bereka tutu. Dilema wa. Ta'aku wa reflection. Tutu. Dilema wa. Jacob. Laban iziri uko ku palasuku. Atsas kuzwadwa ku ndo ndika mashura. Ma kwaya ku edesa na Jacobo. Pa ne mashura ku itika ikosino. Chi na zotia ndashama. Pa ne mashura ku dorangwa ne Mari. Mari pa ne shawari ku ndo kurongera. Iwari muno mutente. Ku basa pa ne shaku itika. Iwari muno mutente. Mu mu chado pa ne shiri ku itika. Iwari muno mutente. Ku chowali spek ku murume wako. Pa ne shiri ku itika. Iwari mutente. Ku vana kari ku chokore pa ne shiri ku itika. Zai iti tika mna zweenda. Va zatanga ku bereka. Tabereka. Ta banza itanga ku bereka. Ku matanga. Zai simbo cha tumatozi. Ama wala wa mba. Ku nde chita. Zine enough evidence. Putika nyayacha ira miki. Ne shaka tauwa mnuwesa chinswa. Shaka tauwa Rebecca chinswa. Shaka tauwa liya chinswa. Kutia kana ku sochi ndjaga na wake ilago. Wa imuputwa ndi asin tedi ma itila apia. Makawi pisaa Jacobo. Kuti dilema vara nde sache. Ti kanya rara hedu. Asitai so di dilema vara asibe reki. Asi hedso. Saka ma kwaya ana chekuita ne miteti. Shina chekuita na Jacobo. Pa ne shima shisiga iti ke kuna lamo. Shina iti ka va uri chete ue. Shina iti ka ku mwenka chete. Hallelujah! Ma kochi Pietri days. Hallelujah ku mwenka chete. Sin di dina siwa mu mwenka chete. Na di di dina siwa mu mwenka chete. Akuna ku ma kwa di no siwa tsindi. Akuna ku ma kuno piwa wana waga insta ndiliwa chi dopona. Ipapano do patino konaguti. Di no ku pama ilako. Mu fita la cheso kuiso. Wa kapetza mo tuwa papa tids. Ipapano. Do patino ku pa buju akon. Wa ne so ne ma drax. Wa ka dopona ne skwa. Ipapano. Pa ne pa ne pa shisiga ite. Asi pa ne pa shino iti kira. Uzari pa duze na ripa ne do pa zino iti kira. Pa ne do pa no chinja mawara. Mawara uepe newako acha chinja. Mawara ekamari ago acha chinja. Mawara muria ago acha chinja. Mawara uepe newako acha chinja. Ne butu wa ueya ku ne magu mfuera ze shoko. Wa ueya ku ne magu mfuera ze shoko. Wa ueya ku ne magu mfuera ze shoko. Uka da ameni mu mfuera ze shoko. Mawara no shaduka. Upe newu no shaduka. Ku faku hurume. Ku enda kuna muna no rene ke zeka. Ku faku mutasi. Ku faku chidapa. Ku faku upamre. Anga shaduka mawara yo. Va ndio ni ndro parizani. Dungoku uza mejku ti. He's the God of Jacob. Akasanga na na Jacobo. Kwa ku mangwa na minguana. Oda sogona mu chidenga mati uwa. Kwa ku ona lata. Viri ku buruka ku pa ne Jacobo soro. Isu ti no zwa lata ojiri tora pa no. Ujiri koneka ku soro. Hero lata no rino pa ne ku nienga. Richi zika pa unoka uri ipap. Ku go ona lata reme amchene ra ku buruka. Chitanga ku tzika tano. Uchi kuira naro. Di Moriah ueya ku na Jacobo. Ku mu fisaa mu lenano ze pasu. Ma chi mu ku za va tumo. Pakwa ku ina isa wa ngaka mirira. Pa ifana ku itika chimachiro. Pa na isa wa ngaka mirira. Mara ifana ku fuera ne pa dompo. Pakwa pakatsumiwa na Jacobo. Cha gachi saruko cha uno zende la pasi. Cha gando obora unu tsani la maskatano. Cha gando obora uno batira pariri maskatano. Ota ka ku namata wa ngapa gachi saruko. Kuti mari wa no shita. Uno ona lata ra ku buruka. Re ku di ochi zika. Na timbo pey Mari chi po chiku. You know what friends? A very good audience today. Keep unbelieving and trusting in God. Dino da dombo. Samiere. Dino da dombo. Sami. Hero dombo rakatsamira. Jacobo. Dombo rakatsamira. Jacobo. Dino da mfuera. Disande. Dino da mfuera. Disande. Mfuera zakashamba. Namani. Mfuera zakashamba. Namani. Dino da dom. Sami. Dino da dombo. Sami. Na di zo ke ku na Exodus. And the Lord said. Zino Jehovah akati. That's, that's a. He says, "Where did we start here brother?" Moreover, he said, "I'm the Lord God of thy father." The God of Abraham. Mariwa Abraham. The God of Isaac. Mariwa Isaac. And the God of Jacob. Mariwa Jacobo. And Moses hid his face. For he was afraid to look upon God. And the Lord said. I have surely seen. The affliction of my people. Which are in Egypt. Oh, hallelujah! And you have heard that cry. By the reason of their tasking masters. For I know their sorrows. And I am come down. To deliver them. Out of the hand of the Egyptians. And to bring them up out of that land. Until a good land. Until a large. Until a large. Until a land flowing with milk. Kunika nerra mu shiroka. And to the place of the Canaanites. And the Hittites. And the Amorites. And the Perizzites. And the Hittites and the Jepusites. Now therefore behold the cry of the children of Israel is coming to me. And I have seen their oppression. Where would the Egyptians oppress them? Come therefore. And I'll send thee unto Pharaoh. That I'll bring them forth. My people. The children of Israel. Out of Egypt. Come you therefore. Please attend there. I have surely seen. The affliction of my people. I want to bring them out. From the land of Egypt. To the land of Kenya. I want to bring the people out. From the land of Skenza. To the land of Hittite. I want to bring my people out. From the land of paradise. To a land. Of bearing forth. I want to bring them out. From the land of poverty and suffering. To a good land. A large land. God wants you to have big things. Not small things. A large land. Flowing with milk and honey. A large land. Flowing with milk and honey. Not a small piece of land. But a large land. And he wants to bring you out. From the land of your bondage. From the land of sin. From the land of adultery. To the land of righteousness. From the land of sin. To the land of godliness. From the land of sin. To the land of godliness. I want to bring them out. I have surely seen. I have surely seen. The affliction of my people. I have seen people suffering with cancer. I have seen people suffering with HIV virus. I have seen my people without good jobs. I have seen my people without children. I have seen my people walking on two feet. I have seen my people. And in the by point sums I think. He said, "This is a great evil." I have seen servants. Riding chariots. And prisoners walking on foot. I have seen adulters. Driving Range Rover GT6. A brother coming to church. Walking holding the spug and whack. I have seen the affliction. Of my people. I have seen sisters. Without a husband. I have seen my daughters. Without a husband. I have seen them. And this is the reason. Of my coming down. But I need someone to send. I need someone to go. And preach to them. And say paradise. Let my people come. Suffering in poverty. Let my people come. That says the Lord. Let my people come. Paradise. Blindness. Let my people come. By the reason of the tasking masters. I have come down. By the reason of cancer. I have come down. By the reason of paradise. I have come down. By the reason of drunkenness. I have come down. By the reason of paradise and whatever. I have come down. And because of your condition. God will come down. Because of your suffering. And the tasking masters. And your condition. That has put in punishment. That has bound you for yes. What is saying. I have come down. To deliver my people. I have come down. To deliver my children. I have come down. To give food on the table. I have come down. Give them clothes to wear. I have come down. By the reason. They are tasking masters. The God of Abraham. The God of Isaac. The God of Jacob. The God of Rebecca. The God of Hannah. The God of Samson. The God of Samuel. The God of Elizabeth. The God of Andy Jemai. The God of Lawrence Nightingale. The God of William Branna. Who was told in that morning. Don't fear. To go anywhere. Don't fear. To say anything. Don't fear. To do anything. For my never-failing presence. Will be waiting. Wherever you go. When you go to Natan. My presence will go with you. And in his presence. He packs the power. The power to deliver. The power to heal the sick. The power to cast the devils. In his presence. Packs the power. To heal every sickness. In his presence. Packs the power. And the power is here today. Because I feel his presence. You recognize his presence. I want to tell you brother. In his presence. The sinner healed. In his presence. The blind receive their salvation. In his presence. The cripple is threatened. Don't worry about your condition. It's not the man who's threatening you. It's the almighty God. The God of Abraham. The God of Isaac. And the God of Jacob. The God who promised to him. All men of sickness and disease. He just told Moses. You take the present shepherd. And put it up there. Whosoever suffering with whatsoever. If they look upon it. They are healed. Look away to Jesus Christ. Look away to the Lord. Look away to the gospel. Look away to the message of the hour. The message of the hour. Have got the answer. To your situation. The message of the hour. It's a compacting power. Compact your condition. The message of the hour. Is the standard of God. That God has lifted up. Against your situation. And by Bible tells me. When the enemy comes like a flood. The spirit of the Lord. You lift up a standard. Against his. The spirit of Allah. The presence of God. The power of God. Is lifting up a standard. Against your suffering. When Pharaoh Apofarou. Caused the children of Israel to suffer with rigor. The more they cried. That's the more God decided. To destroy good other paras. By the reason. Of taking some things. Away from them. That they could suffer. And make bricks. With rigor. If they had not done that. Maybe God was just going to end by the flies and the frogs. But because they ended more burdens. To God's children. God also lifted up a standard. And he said, "By the reason of the tasking masters." "Whose ones I'll deliver them." "With a mighty hand." What was the mighty hand? That was the destruction. That was the death. Of the firstborn. Of the land of Egypt. The firstborn of Pharaoh. And it's the same yesterday. Today and forever. I want to come back to the scripture. He says, "Anote. I have surely seen." Not guessing. I have surely seen. Madamutskoako es. Mararko ahoni. Jorukupura ne majiri jese. Mariwari gusho. Mariwari kutinda onna gusarara kwaku. Na onna paine, ure idama leru yaka enka. Na onna gusaforo ra kwaku. Na onna kutseba kwaku ne wamwele. I have surely seen. The affliction of my people. I have surely seen. How we are suffering with cancer. I have surely seen. How we are suffering with sugar diabetes. I have surely seen. How we are suffering with an extra spirit. I have surely seen. How you have not been married. I have surely seen. How things were not going well for you. How many years you have gone up. Without a job. I have surely seen. How your children are going through. What your children are going through. I have surely seen. The affliction of my people. The affliction of my children. I will not leave them in affliction. I will not leave them in bondage. I will not leave them in Egypt. I have decided. To deliver my children. I have made it sure. That I come down. To deliver them out. I have a place. Prepared for them. A large land. I have a place. Where the Hittites are dwelling. Where the Jebusites are dwelling there. That's your place. I want you to go and possess. Your inheritance. I have seen. How the drunkards are driving what you're supposed to be driving. These are the Jebusites. These are the Hittites. These are the Canaanites. That you must drive them out. Out of your land. Your land of inheritance. Drive the Jebusites. Drive the Hittites. Drive out the Canaanites. Possess bank. Your inheritance. We are the children of promise. Canaan belongs to God's children. Healing belongs to God's children. Blessings belongs to God's children. Driving belongs to God's children. Go and possess. Your inheritance. And it a pillar fire. Will go before you. It's not you. That will drive the Jebusites. It's not you. That will cast out those devils. It's not you. Drive the Jebusites. Drive the Hittites. Drive the Canaanites. Drive them out. I cast out the Jebusites. I cast out the Hittites. I cast out the extra spirits. Dino was suniruta, munika. Dino was suniruta, munika. Dino was suniruta, munika. Drive the Hittites. Drive. The Canaanites. Drive. That doubt. Drive. That unbelief. Drive it out. And possess your inheritance. Possess your Canaan. A land flowing with milk and honey. There's a place my brother. Where you can come to as a Christian. And you are satisfied. There's a place. There's a position. Where you can come as a Christian. Where you can testify. And say, "It is well." With myself. Naka yagopana gakara pa his. Maroka fazago pana hanau. Tora shiro shako. Nofana duga fama moro trosamo. Agawa no amne machane mararamira oneta fana majichare. Ine nijifama nega honda jiteba. Take your inheritance. Take your blessings. It's high time to pray to Jesus Christ. We live now who she is. We must know who we are. We are not the children of tortures. It came at time. Where Sarah opened her mouth. And they cast out the God's woman. And here's Hannah. Cast out the hacker. And Ishmael. Cast out unbelief. Cast it out. Cast out the pont gumane nes. Zinga munkazu inewana aké. Uwa urwazi ore. Uchiwona mombwe, ne ma wure, ne ma Jezebe. No ma Jezebe, saitara ma Jezebe. Beako. Siga ma Jebusites. Siga maya ma tiza, siga di saka naga yo. Siga maya kaipa yo. Siga maya zako sa tendogo. Siga maya zako kubla naito. Siga maya kaipa yo. Siga maya chiro yo. For the son of man. Coming to seek and save. He's looking arugutshaka for someone here. For the son of man is come. To seek kuzotshaka and save. That is all which is lost. That's the reason. He's moving bench to bench. Seeking to save. That which is sick. Seeking to save. That which is lacking. Seeking to save. That which is not married. Seeking to save. That which without a job. Seeking to save. That which without food. Seeking to save. That which without comfort. For the son of man is come. Seeking and save. That which is lost. So the pillar of fire comes. And in the meetings of the prophet. Starts to move. Bench by bench. Above people's heads. And you hear the prophet say. I see the pillar of fire. Above that sister. Then he says, "Oh sister." "Lord, I pray that she may not miss." "I pray that you may not miss." "That the Holy Ghost is here." "He has come down." "You have seen it in the light." And what's the reason? Of his coming. Is to deliver that which is bound. What is the reason? Of the coming of the Lord? Is to save. Is to deliver. Is to set free. That which is bound. When he passed through. The village of Bethge. Bethge. There was a goat. There was a donkey. Tied. An ace with an ace. That was the reason. Of his coming. He was passing by. But he could not go to Jerusalem. Leaving behind a cross. Which was tied with an ace. He could not proceed into Jerusalem. Because also. In Jerusalem. There was a scripture. Which had said, "Behold." By King Kameh. Loli and Mick. Riding on an ace. And the people were waiting. To shout Hosanna. The people were waiting. To scream Hosanna. Which means, "Save us now." Save us now, Lord. But the donkey. He was going to use. Was tied up somewhere. The person. That he wants to use. Is tied up somewhere. The money. That God wants to use. For the veteran of the gospel. It's tied up somewhere. In a certain account. But we are told. But we are sent. Goes straight into Bethge. Goes straight into Stanpick account. There's a money there. There's a certain bounty there. Tied. Which is supposed to be used. For the veteran of the gospel. There's someone's money. Tied up. In a certain account somewhere. You go straight. With the gospel. And it lose them. And it tell them. The Lord has need of it. And the Lord has need of you. The Lord has need of you. The Lord has need of your house. You must have a house. To save the Lord. You must have a car. To save the Lord with. You must have a good job. To save God with. If there were millionaires here. We were going to hire a good place. And hire good shares. And preach the gospel. In a comfortable place. For the people who are supposed. To get to the gospel. They are bound. With poverty. They are bound. With joblessness. They are bound. With misery. I am here today. To turn you loose. For when you are surrendered all heart. Let the kept give it captive. And the kept gives unto men. And I'm here, knowing that the Holy Ghost. To loose you, my brother. To release you. In the name of Jesus Christ. If there's anyone who ever come. And say, "What's true as it now?" I'll just say. The Lord has need of this sister. Maybe if you get married. You'll be a big old swastika. The Lord has need of you. Maybe if you get married. You'll be a preacher swastika. The Lord has need of you. Maybe when you get married. At your home. That's where we'll be bringing visitors. The Lord has need of you. If God blesses you. Maybe if an open heart. Where you can give back to God. The Lord has need of you. The Lord has need of your body. If you are healed. If you are in good health. There are people, my brother. If they are in good health. They don't sit down. But the gospel is then preached. The Lord has need of your legs. The Lord has need of your face. The Lord has need of your hands. They must be tendy loose. They must be tendy loose. How do we know? Maybe if you are tendy loose. You tend in the spirit. Like devil of God. You scream in the spirit. How do we know? The Lord has need of you. I loose you. In the name of Jesus. I release you. Tendy loose. Go and be married. In the name of Jesus Christ. Go and have a good job. In the name of Jesus Christ. Because the Lord is in need of your sacrifices. The Lord is need of your children. Maybe your daughters. Who be like the daughters of Philip. Who are prophets at heart. Who do the speaking tongues. And the prophesy. The Lord is in need of your children. The Lord is in need of your daughter. The Lord is in need of your husband. The Lord is in need of you. The Lord is in need of your house. Amen, iskuwudi wa gajasunga. Hallelujah, iskuwudi wa gajasunga. Nati gloria iskuwudi wa gajasunga. Padi pana wa piwa ko madibet. Enai muno sunukune poko rene manawa. Enai muno sunukune ba sisteraya. Enai muno sunukune ba pragaaya. Enai muno sunukune ba chesha. Mora goka shandisa. Mariwari goka shandisa. Marana goka shandisa we. Marana goka shandisa we. Unafana gusikinua. Marana goka shandisa we. Unafana gusulukua. Weyachira gakusuka. Nai gure kete basata no. Usumi ne mari. Mumea ne bushafan. Mariaru gushaka mandera zegushandisa. Asimanda razaga sunga ne fashion. Mariaru gushaka machaya gushandisa. Asimacha gasunga ne banje. Wagasunga ne musabadia. Wagasunga ne mutwariro. Asipana fana upari zwa fangari. Go loose them. Oh, he's praying. I don't know. I got some. I thought I got some. I saw you. What you want? My name is. I want to. What you want? I got some. I see that you saw. You're going to see Jesus Christ. You got some. I'm gonna go. 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 To Jerusalem. You know what? I'm going to see you. 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 Never mind. I'm going to see you. You can say Jesus Christ. You have shantisah. And you know, you're going to shantisah. You have some. And you know, you're going to shantisah. You want to. You want to. You're going to see Jesus. I'm going to see you. I'm going to see you. I'm going to see you. You want? I'm going to see you. I'm going to see you. I'm going to see you. Yes. You want? Next 15 years. No, I didn't go there. You are next 15 years. I'm going to see you. I'm going to see you. You want? You're going to Jerusalem. But I'm going to. You're going to see. You're going to see. You're going to see. I'm 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 going to see. You know what they said? What's that? Hosanna. Carry one. Carry a corner. I'm going to. I'm going to. Hosanna. I'm going to. I'm going to. Hosanna. 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 I'm going to see you. I'm going to see you. I'm going to see you. Hosanna. She's going to see you. 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 Hosanna. I'm going to see you. Hosanna. Save us. I'm going to see you. Hosanna. Save us now, Lord. Fill me with the Holy Ghost now. Touch me now. Come on, you got it. 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 See, I don't see. Hallelujah. Don't go there. You're dead. I see Jesus. Where is that? You're going to come. I'm going to see you. Hosanna. 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 My brother, I'm going to. Hosanna. My brother, I'm going to. You're going to. Hosanna. My brother, I'm going to. You're going to. Hosanna. My brother, I'm going to. You're going to. Hosanna. You're going to see you. You're going to see you. I'm 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 going to see you. You're going to see you. I'm going to see you. I'm going to see you. See, if you're going to see you. I'm going to see you. I'm going to see you. You're going to go to. Any NGO company. We don't know. They're not passing. Hosanna. Friday, I was preaching on moving. From prophecy to fulfillment. That was my service. My title on Friday. I was preaching on moving. From prophecy. To fulfillment. You know how I got the title? I'm going to. Five minutes to get into preaching. Somebody sent me a text from UK. I'm going to send you the texts. Your pastor, Sinamas. Do you remember 22 September? 22 September. 2022. 2022. You were preaching in Johannesburg. My pastor in Johannesburg. And there was a sister who was buried. They had been married for. Two years, no child. And the pastor prayed for this sister. And evil spirits came out. I did bad. She was. She was. She was. Amen. I'm going to. I'm going to. But now, because I'm going to. I'm going to. She was. Forget about it. But now. So I was invited there. And I was preaching. From now on, I stopped preaching. Then I began to share testimony of one of her sisters here. Who was also being fought in marriage. And people didn't want her to be married. And she was married. And they didn't want her also. To have children. And we prayed. And evil spirits came out. They were casted out. And she had a baby. And I was preaching. And I moved from the puke there. I went to the corner, the back where the sister was. Sharing the testimony, how she got married and how she had a baby. And I took the baby. In my hands. As I took the baby. This other sister, Sister Tiri also. Sister Tiri was a carer. I think she was having difficulties. Difficulties to have children. She was in the. She was standing at a corner. Where whilst his presence passed by. I'm going to. 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 It's a testimony, baby. And she wants a baby. So she was looking at me like that. I perceived. That she had faith. To conceive. I handed her off at the baby. When I handed off at the baby. The Holy Ghost tracked her. She fell down, holding the baby. And she fell down by the back. And the baby sat on the tummy. And I was standing there watching. And the Holy Ghost came upon me. And said, "You see where the baby is." That's how the baby would be inside the womb. Then right at that. I had a reason to pronounce. And I said, "Save your child." In the name of Jesus Christ. If you are born here today. Receive your child. In the name of Jesus Christ. Sister Tiri, come with the baby. And hand her off at the baby. Run with the baby. Come on, run with the baby. Here now, Sister Tiri. Not another gift to Sister Tiri. Give back the baby to Sister Tiri. Pick it, pick it, pick it, pick it. Hand her off at the baby. Hand the baby. Let's close our eyes. For a moment. I rebuke paradise. In the name of Jesus Christ. Let's say, "I'm going to die now." Receive your trade. Receive your conception. You're going to see. We're going to see. Go and exercise your faith. Now, right at that time. I didn't go share that testimony. I lifted my head. And the Holy Ghost said, "That sister is buried." We are Johannesburg, I don't know here. Then I went to her. And I shook her hand. I said, "I give you truth." In the name of Jesus. So when I said that. Then. That's when I said. When I handed off at this sister, the baby. I said, "Who have got a baby? Hand her off at the baby." So they were slickly. Then the pastor rushed with the baby and handed off. Then the time I said, and the Holy Ghost tracked him. And he was down on the floor, speaking in tongues. That sister, right at the time, the Holy Ghost tracked him. And she went down on the floor. You know what? That's 22 September. 22 September. 2022. 2022. To my humble opinion. I haven't checked. The conception must have taken place the very week or just a day after. And then, I'm going to. I'm going to. After a service. My kind of chicken in here. And he's. No, she's going to say. I'm saying, to my humble opinion. But it was. You're going to. Now, when I was parked here. She can say. They have a bounce baby ball. Second, that was 22 September. And that October 1. November 2. December 3. January 4. February 5. March 6. April 7. May 8. You're going to. You're going to. You're going to. All right. You never go to Pocany. The baby of the first sister, part of the testimony, is a baby ball. The other second sister is a baby ball. And that one, because we were sharing a testimony of a baby ball. He also came a baby. Man, do you want? You're going to. 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 Negative. But I'm going to. Very true. And you know, brother, could I? I'm going to. I was preaching in Highlands there. So his wife was sitting at the back. So I'm going to. I said, she wanted twins. Just in her heart. Then I said, "Do you not want twins here?" For I have four more speed. For all these years that I've been in Highlands, from 2005 until today. It was my first time seeing here. Moving from here, running to the puke. Then she came, I shook her hand. And she was there screaming. And she went sick. I think I'm going to. I'm going to. She told the husband, she can say. That's why I'm going to. I'm going to. So she came. They went home. She took conception. I don't know how many days after the service. But there were twins inside. Nine months ago. One of the twins. They had crossed. And she was due. And she was taken to Maroon to the hospital. And it was a Sunday. And she went on Sunday. But Sunday, she was in the hospital. And I was preaching here. Then the husband is worried. Then it was 10 minutes before she was supposed to be taken in the theatre. Because the baby had crossed. Then the brother said, "Let me just go on Facebook." Eh, not on Facebook channel. And hear what Pastor Sinamas is saying. Right at that time. I'm going to log in. When you just login. Then I said, I said, "Refuse what's written on the scam." I'm going to. 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 You're going to. You're going to. You're going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. You're going to. Sister Mida. Few minutes. To walk in the operation. The prophet was praying. My name is. Because that day she didn't mean it. It was just a pressure of life. I'm going to. 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 She can just stand up. She can just say what you want to happen to your wife. My wife doesn't have a tumor. But I want to cause. To give, yes. Say what you want to happen to your wife. Stand up and say what you want to happen. Pastor, I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. In the end, I'm going to. I'm going to. Ministers, say what you want. What you want to happen to your wife. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. Nda tuwa pariza ta ura isha muru ya dijiteka, kuma si mayenyu. Yes. Marana gurua pa fata, wana ma imu fundis. Marana gurua pa fata, wana ma imu fundis ya. Marana ku kopa, ma koba repa imi. Ne kuda ba tumira kama nde tanewa rumbe re. Ne kuda ba tumira kama nde tanewa da wama. Thank you, Jesus. Receive it in the name of Jesus. Yes, 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 yes. Yes, receive it, thank you, Jesus. Because of your lepers. Because of your tremendous lepers. Shaiita pa maribana shaiita. Yes. Vashani wa tsumais. Amusasha ipa kisala. Amusasha ipa kisala yenge. Amusasha ipa kisala yenge, paka naga. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. My Lord and my God. Of his spirits. Say what you want to happen to your wife. Because, wise. Because. Say what you want to happen. To your wives and children. I'm speaking by the Holy Spirit. I know what I'm talking about, brother. I know what I'm talking about, my brother. Ya tinta ura isha urkuda dijite. Kuna ma imu fundis i kuku. Kanava ri kuwaala. Chitaurama bore rash. And no tuka ma bundu. Ari munana ma imu fundis. Ne mu sita ra Jesus Christo. Oh my, hallelujah! And iti mi tanga ine bundi, ne paru tiwe. Thank you, Jesus. Nari tuka bundi ora. Naa tuka ma fae brotiaya. Naa tuka chimeleko china rata. Gachi pora chimeleko chi. Ne mu sita ra Jesus Christo. Gachi chena chimeleko chi. Gachi gasa chimeleko chi. Receive your healing, church. Wherever you are. I don't care where you are, whether at the back there. Kanawi nobody uru rata. Kanawi ne complication. Receive your healing in the name of Jesus. Jikanzi, before the doctor's hand touches my wife, I want that tumor to dissolve. And that problem is dissolved. Sangayoye irku nyango dek. Masukia nda sister. Di maana. Yaku to nomu ita. Iju no kte nda masukia. Pa ma bo ya pa ma msa no kte nda. Azutenda. Good health, children. Now you have the life. In church, there is a sister who was having a terrible headache. And was causing her to wear the specs. Some were in preaching, I just said, "Those specs is because of your headache." I condemned. And I saw her removing them instantly. Then I went something, I did what I did. While those people's eyes were closed. But strange enough, after preaching, when I was at the cup, I felt a burden. They gave her that handkerchief. And it was one of my nicest handkerchiefs. But I had to obey. So I tried to look for where the sister was. She was nowhere to be found. So I thought she has gone out of the gate and gone. Just at that moment, I saw her coming from this side. And stood there. Can I ask for your help? I said, "I wanted to give you help." There, in that church, there was a time when we were there. There was a sister. I think at one time she lost her eyesight completely and became blind. That was 2015, that's what she said. And the husband could give her food on the bed and leave her in the house. Everything that she needed surrounding her on the bed. Somehow, they went to the, uh, whatever, the specialist, the opticians and so forth. So she was given some specs, she began to see hazy things, but at least she could probe in. So that day when we were preaching, I can't remember the other issue, but she was just at the back wearing a, a, a yellow top. I just pointed it from the pulpit. And the Holy Ghost struck her, she was down. Yes, I remember what it was. She was having severe back pains, shock pains. So when she fell down like that, somehow her specs were up in the air. So after the service, when they went home, they, on Monday, they began to discuss about the Sunday service. The husband said, "Did you notice yesterday when you fell down?" "You were holding your specs like this in the air." He said, "Really?" "I did notice." Then, when I felt it, she only felt something on her back and it stopped. Then she said, "Then it means they are fine." And she removed it instantly. And she came here from church to hear. Without specs. She has seen. Removing specs. It's nothing. When we were in Rustland, in South Africa, there was a blind sister, completely blind, stoney blind. When I was sharing the testimony of the opening of the blind eyes, she stood up following my, my voice. Then she came to shake my hand. I didn't know she was blind. The moment she shook my hand, the eyes came open. Around that time, there's a couple who had a child who was born without testicles. So there was such a wave of the Holy Ghost that moved in the bed. So, angas na zimane. So, when that wave moved, I said, "In Greenland, there was a brother who had a growth here." I varabunduri ane tishen, ndakati kanapani cha usinga de pa wali pa bat. Varabata bunduri. Then I prayed. Within a week, it disappeared. Kwakanda goita. That's right. Kwakanda go. Let's close our eyes. Yes, wonderful. Yes. Jato ita sister. After twenty minutes, wakatora ma na bogo nanaya kuma bathrooms. Kogu no mvisa trous, ma testicles angas sikwa. I am the God of Abraham. The God of Isaac. And the God of Jacob. What color of ice? I've got the Father giving the testimony in my phone on the video. There was nothing. Ino kuna pera within. Five minutes, I go on this. Here, sister. And ndina oku take it two weeks back. Ndakaga garasu vanako otu nde keta. Sister, ndainda adauta wakari pama meetings au. Wakau ya free ticket. Ne disaya yangu ni. If I run, they never believe. They must tend. We were in a tent in Kadoma there. And there was a sister who wanted to go to the UK. Vangu ni chpadi, vataga wana ma chazimari. Drukuda ati mpariza. Akangota urajeku UK beds. Madame, you want to go to the UK, you go. Faith is very simple. Time zero, ze bulangi. Lozila wita ma jera. Asti simke, nisuka. Ti varaimasiso. I want to say, your condition is a reason. Let's all close our eyes. Maswa, sister. Varaimasiso. These are simple instructions that we must follow. That's how you miss God. And never you do that. You'll miss your blessing. Your condition is the reason of his coming. And I want to say, condition ya ko ndambu zikoraku ratu wana. Seka mari aku kukudita. Munika hi wunapu. Ari kukupinza. Munika yakana. As brother Nyambiri comes to close in a word of prayer, I will just lay hands on few people that I feel late to pray. Let's all close our eyes. Never you try to open. Yes. You are the reason of his. I've never seen you here. I've never. I'm sad. I'm sad. And I will say to you, there's one thing. Prophet a iti akadizena munisovati, ne wo wango aripasaidpachi. Uka wana cha kana kacha itika. Vane aripasaid ne we. Ita the right men do attitude. Munai injeriru, wa nyagunza ndi, wa nyemwe reera. Pana nda ita sister ah. Warume ama, varaimasiso. Pray, brother Nyambiri. Mari makarura me xiangu mshene. Xoko renyura we ya mari makana. Aba dikati mu mene mu ya Jehovah. Ngaki sunga take Jehovah. Aba di budemunika ya utapka. Aba timude muja yu tapka. Aba tiroka mujira shokorenyu. Ngari makana ka, ishi Jehovah. Suwa ra nasi ngari makarurama. Do suwa re kubula Jehovah. Aba mu captivity baba. Suwa ra nasi Jehovah baba. Do suwa re kubula Jehovah. Mu rwele wa tichemeza. Suwa ra nasi ngari makana ka. Do suwa re kubula Jehovah. Mu pofati ya tichemeza. Suwa ra nasi ngari makana ka. Do suwa re kubula Jehovah. Mu parenisa chemeza wana veni. Suwa ra nasi ngari makana ka. Do suwa re kubula Jehovah. Mu makumba chemeza wana veni. Suwa ra nasi ngari makana ka. Do suwa re kunyara kwe misana. Yangay chemeza wana veni Jehovah. Suwa ra nasi ngari makana ka. Do suwa ra mujanya rata wana mai. Van gava chema ne wana va vanesa. Oh Jehovah. Muri mariwa no tikinura. Oh ngari makana ka. Aba muri mariwa no poreza. Oh ngari makana ka. Muri mariwa no rangari ra. Aba ma rangari ra Jehovah. Maska minyengetero baba. Yeva na komaana. Maska minyengetero Jehovah. Yeva na sikana baba. Basire okerereke nyumari. Basire muwe nyari pano baba. Aba murasiwa shamu chemeza. Murasiwa shamurwata baba. Murasiwa shamu tambuza. Ngari makarurama Jehovah. Waloza otuwa muriko ka baba. Aba ndoguera ruporezo mari. Do sakata uya pano baba. Adno mwe patino nanga. Asu yamushokore in Jehovah. Aba there is that heaven in Jehovah. Aba there is that corner father. The amen corner Jehovah. Do yata uya nasi Jehovah. The hallelujah, Alpha and New Father. Do yata xofan baba iri baba. Aba chini batira in Jehovah. Aba kisurunguera yu wana veni. Do chikanzoro maka uya baba. Do chikanzoro ma buruka muari. Aba mukati me tenderi, no baba. Pano muwe uwele baba. Wakata tukana na chiremba. Ngari makarurama Jehovah. Aba kama conditions. Aba ekura ra ma kwe wano. Aba kama conditions. Ekura ra ma kwe amane anjoze. Asi ngari makana ka. Tino sumuka Jehovah. Kuva pana no yoyo. Tino ramba Jehovah. Unyaga shaka nyoruwa. Nana chiremba. Aba basire wana veni Jehovah. Aba tino kute ndai. Aba ne wana komaana. Aba ne varaskana veni. Aba matikinawa ze maskatani. Tino kute ndai baba. Ne wana veni ngari wedenga. Ba makazira jishaa. Ngari wa masimose baba. Aba jisharo baba. Shanga singa kamuchire. Makazira jishaa. Ngari makarura ocho kute ndai. Makajitawa ni Jehovah. Pana sera Jehovah. Eight ninety years. Oh ngari makana ka. Makamita mandara. Aba murasiwa shakare. Unyaga pasuwa ra nasi baba. Ngari masiswa yuayo. Anga oneza Jehovah. Ngari wa karurama. Muraisa mamwe matcha. Wanachiremba Jehovah. Waloza na kupama giras. Asi ngari wedenga. Muropa jishaa. Indawani muruwe yaba. Muru yaka bameba brother brana. Waloza kusoneka Jehovah. Only with hollow eyes. Asi ngari makarurama. Wakad desire. Aba kuwa ne meso. Ngari muka mupa. Agachu sakala. Aba yamasiso. Ay na Jehovah. Oh ngari makana ka. Aba tino kute ndai. Aba ne kutirangari ra. Tino kute ndai Jehovah. Ne gurangari ra wana veni. Tino kute ndai baba. Ne gurangari ra kerereke. Masji tanguwa ze maskatani. Aba wana veni Jehovah. Ishi wangoo mochere wedenga. Aba ramiba kandaro. Nano isho ngari wedenga. Asira mitzakandaro. Do sakama kainapaka uva. Achira mijo akadero baba. Pani shirukushanduka. Oh ngari makana ka. Basire ikerereke baba. Aba disa tia uta Jehovah. Aba shokorenyu muari. Aba desa John Ryan. Agaramba chitenda. Ngari makarurama Jehovah. Unyaga paka vah. Pakuna matiwa Jehovah. Wakazogera singa one. Asi wa itenda. Ngari makarurama Jehovah. Rimazwa rimu baba. Oh waka shamiskua. Kujua napakiras. Oh Jehovah. Lord, we thank you this hour. How we glorify your name. You have seen the afflictions, Father. And the suffering of your children. For the reason of these tasking masters. Do sakama tikaba baba. Ngari mochene ngari wa kandaro. Address every need baba. Yeva na koma, ne varasikana. Ngari wa karurama Jehovah. Ba we have found from far. Ngari wa masimose Jehovah. Aba zogida bakandaro. Ngari mochene ngari wedenga. Mucha apase kushua kuwa. Wakamuchise ishi wangoo. Aba ndogu tende imashita. Wa imaskatani ngari makana ka. Aba tio kute ndai ngari makana ka. Uwe mweni wa imangwana rati ndai. Ne mweni zuwa ra ne zuro. Ngari murama mchidumba baba. Murama mchidiva ka Jehovah. Aba tirota Jehovah baba mochene. Karamzati mapesa nessu. Uwe yu shakari pangwa ze maskati. Aba kusoneka Jehovah. As we shall come back again. Aba for another service. Come and address everything, Lord. Ngari makarurama Jehovah. Passa rapose baba. Uwe imatse muri muwchene. Ngari mochene ndogu tende. Tino kurumbe sai Jehovah. Tijpa mbirio se no kuzoka mori. Koto rumbe zwa ina matwa. Imu munokarane kusinga peri. You are the Alpha and the Omega. Oh Lord Jehovah, we thank you. Thank you even for thy servant that you have used this afternoon. Oh God, we glorify and praise and give you all the honor. In Jesus' mighty name we thank you. Hallelujah. God bless you. Katpe yemari shupajukombe. Amen. Kete na mari, yawa fundis. Vuma kushansana mari. Kuti mari wataore ni woyedu. Uwe kuti. Wati tiri zaganaka.